...do a project like this without doing anything temporarily, but we are...
So they'll have some inconveniences that we'll work around in that office area until we go to the next steps.
That is our everyday world.
All your problems don't go away in one summer.
No, no. Or two.
We're going to start with a slightly different order. Instead of opening with a public forum, we're going to open with a public hearing for ordinance 04, 2016-2017, which is an ordinance adopting Chapter 14, Article 3 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket for Sewer Use Ordinance.
Sean, do you want to?
Yeah, the question was going to be about who does the installation? And that's the piece we need to do. We did talk about it. It's coordination to do and because it's E-Rate Elementary. And what it is, is a set of rules and regulations that makes it fair and so everybody knows what we're doing. We have, the reason we're updating it is, one, because it's been so many years. But probably the most purposeful is because we have our wastewater permit, which has industrial pretreatment, which has infiltration, inflow, things that we have to do. So we need to update our sewer use ordinance so, to bring us up to the date. And by bring us up to date, it's actually, we actually have to work with the Department of Environmental Services to put in the proper language. So we've come to this little piece of booklet here, to this book here. I have Steve Clifton from Underwood Engineers that helped me work on it. And I also have Alexis, and I'm going to quote your last name.
Rasteguyev.
Rasteguyev. These were the key people that helped us work on this to make sure that we have the proper language and we have the proper, we have everything in it that needs to be in it. We also looked at a couple of towns to make sure that we were, we weren't any different from local towns. So I'm going to have Steve come up and give a presentation on what we did.
All right, as Sean said, my name is Steve Clifton. I'm an engineer at Underwood Engineers. And I also want to acknowledge Alexis Rasteguyev. He's in New Hampshire.
You just did that to brag.
I mean, I've heard it all. But he's the industrial pretreatment supervisor for the state. And any small communities that don't have industrial pretreatment programs, he gets heavily involved in industrial pretreatment. So he's taken some time tonight to be here and I just wanted to publicly thank him. All right, we just have a brief presentation and we want to answer your questions. Sean did a pretty good introduction and a history. We'll cover some of the regulatory framework and just give you a general overview. Your packet included a two-page summary, which basically did a synopsis of the sixty or so pages of the ordinance. And then, as I mentioned, answer your questions. The first ordinance, or the ordinance in place currently until you adopt a new one, is the 1977 ordinance. At that point in time, it was a requirement of the town to adopt a sewer use ordinance so we could obtain family and state grants in low-interest homes. Back when the Clean Water Act was initiated and EPA was formed, you would almost get, well, you would get ninety percent on the dollar for your grants back in the late seventies. And it's just good practice having a sewer use ordinance. Sean just showed you the small booklet versus the eighty-page document or something we have. You had a Board of Sewer Commissioners at that point in time. Just to give you some idea of the regulatory framework, the ordinance sets forth uniform requirements, that's very key, uniform requirements for everybody, for the uses of the town's publicly-owned treatment works. That's your wastewater treatment plants, your interceptor sewers, your collection system, and your wastewater pumping stations, all in a public right-of-way that the town owns. It also enables a town to comply with applicable state and federal laws, including the Clean Water Act, the General Pretreatment Regulations, 40CFR 403, the State RSA's 149I and 485A53, which basically allow you to create a sewer use ordinance, enforce it, and give you justification for it. And also, you want to just have an ordinance to accomplish the purposes of the town. So the purpose of a sewer use ordinance, it's to protect the wastewater treatment facility, protect the environment, the public and the treatment plant and collection system staff, promote sludge reuse where you can, and comply with state and federal regulations. It also defines uniform requirements for design, construction, and use of the sewer collection system. Also allows you to enforce these requirements and establishes penalties for violations. And defines the responsibility for the sewer collection system maintenance, especially the private side of the maintenance. And then, you know, the key one is establishes a sewer use attraction system. The major changes from 1977, really, the 1977 ordinance had everything in it. It just needed to be expanded. And so it expanded and updated the general use policies, added industrial pretreatment and industrial user permit requirements and reporting requirements. And that's a big one. There are categorical industries that have to meet pretreatment requirements before they discharge to your sewer system. And if they're on that categorical list, they have to implement pretreatment. Everybody's treated fairly and equally. Also, there's some administrative judicial and supplemental enforcement remedies that we included in the ordinance. And then we also included septic disposal regulations. Should you get trucked in waste to your treatment plant, there are regulations in place in the ordinance for you to deal with that. Make sure it's not corrosive or toxic to the treatment plant, domestic type of septic system waste. Sean mentioned, we did take a look at the other ordinances. They're pretty much all the same. They're in, basically have the same languages. They're just structured a little differently depending on how the towns implement them. Exeter, I believe, is the most closely aligned with yours, most up-to-date, your draft one. But same components. Portsmouth, a little bit different. You know, at least on the website, it looked like an older ordinance, needed to be updated. And then Dorit, very similar to yours also. So nothing new here. Pretty much everybody uses the same languages, updated for current regulations and, you know, protect the sewers, the sewer users, the staff, and the town's investment. It was just a brief presentation. Lot in the document to read, the two-page summary. But Alexis, Sean, and I are here also to answer any of your questions.
Well, I don't see anybody from the public that has a comment or from the hearing part of it. Are there any counselors? There are no lights going here. I guess the only question I have is, you know, in terms of voting the ordinance, do we, can we go out of order and vote it now or should we wait until...
You should wait until, unless the council suspends its rules by two-thirds vote, you stick to the agenda.
We'll just stay on the agenda then, that's not that key. But I'm not seeing a lot of controversy here, so.
Mr. Chair, actually, procedurally, this is a public hearing for the public. The discussion for the council happens later in the meeting during the vote.
Okay. Will everybody be here at that later, at that point?
We can't keep them here, but they should be here until the vote happens. Yes, they will be here.
Counselor Cast, do you want to make your comment now or do you want to wait?
This is the public hearing.
So I have to wait?
Counselors should wait until the council has debate.
I will wait until the appropriate time.
Yeah, so you open the public hearing at 7:15. You would close the public hearing, if there's no comment from the public, at 7:22.
Okay, and now we have another public hearing.
Yep, so you open the second one at 7:22.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're opening as the second public hearing for ordinance 5, 2016-17. An ordinance amending Chapter 32 zoning, Article 1, Section 32.2, purposes and Article 4, signs of the municipal code of the Town of Newmarket and zoning ordinance adopted 21496 as amended through March 1, 2017. Any comments on the signage ordinance? Town Planner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the town. It's a pleasure to be here in the city. I am here with Mike Hoffman, our co-enforcement officer. This is going to be sort of a joint presentation. But I wanted to let you know that the, we're here actually on behalf of the planning board, who has been working on some zoning changes. We had a workshop starting in January. We got a public hearing and a formal public hearing on May 9. And they are recommending that the board's changes, as presented to you, are considered and hopefully adopted. There are two areas that we're addressing this evening. One is to provide clearer authority in the town zoning ordinance for the planning board to exercise its authority to consider aesthetic and design considerations as part of the site plan review subdivision and zoning process. And we received, just to give you a little bit of background recently, the planning board, one of the planning board decisions on Great Street was challenged by the developer, who claimed that the planning board really didn't have authority to take the aesthetics of the Great Street project on New Village. And it did go to court and the court held in favor of the planning board stating that the planning board was doing its job. So our town attorney has recommended that we add some language to really clarify it going forward in case there's no legal challenge. The second area of changes this evening concerns our signage regulations. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mike because he's our person who actually enforces the signage regulations and has a lot of experience in dealing with the regulations we have now and knows really what we need to do to bring it to conformance with newer standards and also the state and federal laws. Mike, why don't you come on up?
Thank you, thank you. So basically what occurred that gave us the impetus to come forward was a Supreme Court case, Lee versus Gilbert, Arizona, where the Supreme Court said that news values cannot regulate content of a sign. So we can't regulate a real estate sign differently from a Coca-Cola sign. We can't say it's okay if the Boy Scouts put a sign here, but not Planned Pampa. So if we allow a sign, we allow a sign. We can allow certain design standards, sizes. And so we went through our signage ordinance and I keep notes sometimes when we have little issues in enforcing some of our ordinances. And we had a lot of unintended consequences in our current signage standards. We missed a few things. And I can go through them pretty quickly. They're in red in your package. First was the electronic message board sign, which we had to clean out of a little bit so that we didn't have some of these signs. I'm sure you've seen them in Manchester, Somersworth, where they might say, things aren't, not everybody would agree. And so these message boards can easily say anything they want. We can't regulate what they say. So that can be problematic because we, I think at end, we don't want the downtown looking like some strip mall or Vegas or something of that sort. So, and we also referenced exactly LED, well, we said neon signs. And there are a lot of other technologies that do the same thing as neon. It could be LED, it could be some other, so we broadened that a little bit to encompass those internally limp, limp-type signs. And that was in the definitions and also in the text of the ordinance. And yard sales, we had a perpetual yard sale. Every single weekend, this one person had a yard sale. That turns into another business operation. At some point, we say, is this a business or is this a yard sale? If you do it two days a week, I know some businesses that only open two days a week. So, and that was residential. So we looked at that and the planning board felt that four days per calendar year was appropriate for yard sale, not every single weekend, you know, three days a week. Basically, we used to say real estate signs could be in the right-of-way, public right-of-way. We can't do that. If we say real estate signs can be there, Coca-Cola can be there, anybody else can be attached to them. It could be any.
I know. I don't want that.
We just cleaned up some of the language as far as ADA and it's really persons with disabilities is the proper way of saying that. We have one issue with a awning that was being used as a sign. It's translucent material and they get backlight it and it turns into a sign. And again, it was, it was a backlit, in some people's opinion, is a backlit sign. And so we cleaned that up so that an awning can't be translucent material. We have a light source behind it and you create a backlit sign. The backlit signs aren't allowed. So we cleaned that up. We ended up working a little bit, the planning board especially, was working on the subdivision, one subdivision sign and it's twelve square feet, six feet high. No, those look, those tend to look good. The contractors and developers want them. There's a couple words taken out here and there without having a lot of effect. And we got into the flashing and blinking again. If we allowed, our old ordinance allowed for time-temperature sign. Well, that's regulated content. If you allow time-temperature, you're allowing, you know, anything else to be on that flashing-blinking sign. So we have flashing-blinking signs, especially in the historic district. And we expanded a little bit on the type of materials used. We said that you couldn't use plastic. Plastic should be minimized. Minimize is really hard word to enforce. What's minimize is, it's got that quantifiable. And we have some of our best-looking signs, which are actually a plastic material. It's high-density urethane. They look like carved wood, but they last forever. And they're gorgeous. Some of the best-looking signs down Main Street are actually plastic. And we kind of, you know, say, yeah, it's okay. But this way, it's actually in the code saying it's okay, it's legally there. We just kind of allow them something to happen. A lot of talk about the message boards. The blinking, flashing message boards are a bit of a problem. The Newmarket Business Association, many moons ago, asked for sandwich boards to be actually allowed, rather than a blink, a wink and a nod and we're not going to do anything about it as long as it's wooden. And that actually goes back some time and people have now really made it. And we've applied regulations. We looked at regulations that Portsmouth had, Exeter had, and I brought forward what I thought was the best of the planning board. And they, there was a little bit of discussion, but they all came around to...
Consensus there.
Yes, strong consensus to me.
Our regulations.
Yeah. But that really helps businesses too. I mean, the downtown businesses, they need to do what they can. We did have some signs that we trimmed down in size. And probably the most notable was the projecting signs could be, what they were, twenty-four square feet, which nobody really has downtown. That would be huge. If somebody did that, I'd be getting complaints all over the place. And we did have a recent twenty-four square foot sign. We got a lot of complaints, but it was completely legal. And that one was a freestanding one, so it was completely legal. But somebody could have put that same-sized sign hanging off the front of any one of the stores in downtown. And it, it's a tough thing, especially since it's supposed to be the hundred-mile pro-wood design as well. We also had, unintentionally, we allowed internally illuminated signs in all zones except for the M2, which meant all the residential zones, you could have internally illuminated signs, which was not intended. So we cleaned that up as well. And there was some talk about keeping the signs aesthetically pleasing. And that's about it.
Can I ask you to answer any questions? Is the public here? Yes.
Are there any questions from the public?
You wait till the council...
Seeing no questions from the public, we will close the public hearing for that ordinance and move on, going back to the public forum at this time. And one person from the public that we see as expected is Senator Fuller Clark.
Thank you very much. For the record, I am Senator Martha Fuller Clark. I represent District 21, as you know, which consists of the city of Portsmouth and the surrounding communities of Newmarket, New Fields, Newington, Durham, Lee, and Matbury. And I apologize for, I was just a few minutes late, but I was downstairs at the wrong meeting.
What are yous going?
I was suddenly glad for the school, which was very exciting. And suddenly I realized, no, I'm in the wrong place. So I apologize for that and thank you for your patience. I'm here basically to try to give you an update and an overview of this legislative session. We've struggled a few times to find a date to get together. I have been able to meet with most of the other communities in my district, so you're a little late on the list. But I appreciate you being willing to make time for me. And I was sort of making a list here, but it seems like, in terms of really bringing you up to date at this particular juncture, what, the main topic should really be the budget, which I think you all know is going to be voted on tomorrow. But before we get into that discussion, I just wanted to congratulate you for your success in having finally moved forward on being able to upgrade your elementary, your middle school, and your high school and to say how sorry I am that the state has not been able to help you in that process. I know the Representative Kenny Hill is here tonight. And I think you all know how hard he has worked on this issue. And I have tried to be very supportive in finding some school building aid, but we're not there yet, unfortunately. And so we'll continue to address that issue and perhaps in the future, it will be possible to find some retroactive dollars, but I'm not highly optimistic about that. I also wanted to say that about six weeks ago, I had the opportunity to tour your wastewater treatment plant. And it was extremely impressive. And I was particularly impressed with all of the people who work there. And what a really terrific job they are doing and how lucky you are to have such a really state-of-the-art facility and plant. And as you know, Portsmouth is still struggling with that issue and unfortunately, a very high cost to our city. So congratulations. I also want to answer any questions that you might have and just remind you that there is a second year of this biennium. And I hope to come back to you in the fall if you have particular legislative requests that I can work with you on in conjunction with your excellent representatives that are doing an outstanding job of speaking for this town in the House of Representatives. So the budget has been quite controversial, as you may or may not be aware. What I did want to start out with was to let you know that there was a, there will be a surplus from the 2016, 2017 budget that was approved in the last session of biennium. And there are some, there's some good news about that surplus. Money was taken to put additional dollars into the state's rainy day fund. You think back maybe six years ago, we only had $12 million in that rainy day fund. And now we have somewhere between $100 and $130 million in that rainy day fund. So that's really means that, you know, there's a good cushion there for the state going forward. The second thing is that money was made available through that surplus to assist local towns with additional dollars for roads and bridges. So we are trying to send, the budget process and the legislature is trying to send some monies back to cities and towns to help with transportation issues. So that's outside of the ten-year plan. But recognizing that we still have an outstanding number of redline bridges and that we're still looking at, you know, many of our roads needing additional investment and upgrades. So those dollars are available and a certain amount will be coming to each community to use. But I have a specific amount of money that will come to Newmarket, but I can get that for you. And finally, $10,000, $10 million was created out of, I believe it's out of that surplus, to create a scholarship fund for students in New Hampshire to help them with the high cost of tuition. It's too bad in a way that that money was not designated just for our university system. But those dollars can be applied for, through the governor's office, for assistance for any college or university in the state of New Hampshire, both public and private. Knowing that we have such a high tuition cost at our university system, I would have preferred, and many of us would have preferred, that those monies had been allocated just for the university system to increase the number of in-state students who would have financial support to assist them in going to the state university system. The, one of the big disagreements that has been ongoing about shaping the budget for the next biennium is about revenues. And there, if you go to the website for the New Hampshire Physical Policy Institute, it gives you a very detailed breakdown. But there basically were the revenues that were proposed by the governor, the revenues that were proposed by the Senate. And as you know, the House came forward with revenues, but they were not able to pass a budget with revenues and expenditures onto the Senate. But when the Senate was crafting the budget, they took into consideration many of the proposals, both the revenue proposals and the expenditures that were in the budget that didn't pass in the House. And when it came time to review that budget through committee of conference, they invited participants from the House to participate in the committee of conference and to negotiate the final budget. There is concern that our revenues, as you saw just from the surplus, have been coming in very strongly and that we had the opportunity to invest more dollars than what is actually in the budget to address some of the critical issues that are facing New Hampshire. And I know that there is concern on the part of many legislators that we should be doing that because we have serious needs that the state is facing. And there's a question if we're really adequately funding them. And amongst those needs are really substantial dollars that are needed for treatment, prevention and treatment and recovery for the opioid crisis, which is continuing to worsen in our state. And I just read yesterday that ninety individuals are dying on a daily basis in the United States from overdoses, which is really, you know, we may be leading the pack in terms of the percentage that we're seeing in New Hampshire, but this is a national crisis. And while money was put in to help with the opioid crisis, one of the areas that was not funded, there's money for expansion of beds. There's money for more police. There's money for the court, the court system. But one of the critical issues is, so you create more facilities, but if you can't hire the staff, you can't actually treat the individuals who need to be treated. And right now, the amount of dollars that are available to fund the staff to man these facilities was not increased. And I know it was not... And I know it was not increased adequately for the disability waitlist, it was not increased adequately for our nursing homes. I heard from my nursing home in Portsmouth that they can't compete with the $12 an hour that McDonald's is currently offering. And so, they're seeing their LNAs go working at McDonald's rather than being willing to take jobs in nursing homes. So, that is an issue that we are continuing to face, and did not really receive the dollars that it needed to receive. The disability waitlist was only partially funded, and I think you know that that is for adults who are above the age of 21, who cannot take care of themselves. And in many instances, what we're seeing is that family members are having to quit their jobs to stay home to look after those individuals, and then over time, they fall behind financially, and it's just a downhill cascade. And we've struggled from many legislative sessions to try to eliminate the disability waitlist by providing the funding that's needed. And so, that's still meant to be a challenge for the state. And other things like paying for a new workforce training program, because we currently have 20,000 jobs in New Hampshire that cannot be filled because the businesses cannot find the trained workforce that they need to hire those individuals. So, that also, there was an initiative to try to create a workforce program that was really focused around providing the skills that are needed for 21st century workforce. We have other workforce programs, but they're not really meeting the need of many businesses in the state. There was no increase in the funding for the UNH budget. There was some monies, about $6 million additional monies that were provided for the community colleges, but basically, that was really for investment in facilities principally, and some funding for operating dollars, but not to help students. And again, I believe you are aware that we have the highest tuition rate at the University of New Hampshire, and that we have the second, the third highest tuition rate at our community college, which means that we're having students go out of state, and so that we're still dealing with the Silver Tsunami, and not being able to hold on to young people in our state. So, that, that is an issue that we're going to continue to have to wrestle. What is it that we need to do in this state to keep young people here and to give them the skills and to create the communities here where they want to stay here and can work here and can contribute to a vital economy in New Hampshire? Medicaid expansion, which was adopted four years ago in a bipartisan compromise, and then extended for an additional two years, will end in 2018 if we do not take steps to extend it for another two years. Currently, 53,000 individuals in the state are now receiving health insurance and access to healthcare that they didn't have in the past, and over 10,000 of those individuals are receiving care for opiate or alcohol addiction, personally opiate addiction. There is concern that we don't know what's happening in Washington, so the legislature for the time being has taken no action on extending the Medicaid expansion. But it has brought us additional health insurance companies in the state, it has kept the percentage of increase in our premiums much lower than many other states in the country, it has reduced the number of emergency room visits for individuals with no health insurance, and therefore, they've seen a reduction of close to 30%, which means that uncompensated care costs have gone down. So, it's not only been helpful to the people who need the coverage, but it has been helpful to our hospitals and to the economy of the state. So, we don't really know what's going to happen tomorrow with the budget, because there is this concern. And then, on the other side, there are a number of individuals that believe that the budget that was passed was too generous, and that it only should be, have been increased to the amount that our population had increased and the degree that the cost of living had gone up, which is somewhere around 1% to 2%. So, but if we think back to where we were in 2010, 2012, we had hundreds of millions of dollars cut out of our budget. And what that meant was that the downshift into local communities, and as we know, local communities, the only resource they have is to raise property taxes. So, one of the other fights that's going on is rather or not, this budget should include additional reductions in the business profits tax and the business enterprise tax. And what that would mean going forward is this year, it would be an additional 30, 40 million dollars lost in revenues of the first year of the next biennium. In the second year of the biennium, it would mean an additional loss of $100 million, and we would be looking by 2022 to somewhere around with the other business cuts that were passed from the last budget, about $230 million in loss of potential revenue to the state, at a time when we still haven't been able to make communities whole again with the amount of money that was taken away from local communities over the last several bienniums. So, that continues to be one of the issues that is under very intense debate. Other pieces of legislation that you might be interested in, I sit on the Energy Committee. We've worked very hard to continue to move forward with renewable energy. We passed a bill that will make it possible for our bio, our, what do I want to say, our hydro, small hydro plants in New Hampshire to continue to get the additional support that they need so that they can continue to function. That's a number of significant jobs if we were to lose those small biomass plants. We are looking at implementing an energy efficiency resource standard that would incentivize greater energy efficiency for both individuals and communities. That bill is in study and will come out next January. Those are just two key issues, continuing to look at the recommendation of the PUC that is recommending that Eversource complete the sale of the various plants that I have, particularly the Bow plant. A bill was passed to allow for vouchers for private and religious schools. A bill was passed, as you may be aware, that raises the bar with regard to the access and ease with which individuals can vote at Senate 03, and creates a much higher set of bureaucratic requirements in order to prove that you are a resident of the state and that you have lived here for at least 30 days before you vote, where, and it's all built around this idea that there's a perception of fraud, where there actually has been minimal or almost no fraud that has been identified in the state, but that we need to make sure that we feel safe and confident that fraud is not occurring. The concern is in the process that we are making it harder for the elderly to vote, for young people to vote, and is that really what we want to do in the state? So, but that bill passed. So, that's a synopsis. I was just going to tell you with regard to the issues around the business profits tax, that currently about only 3% of our businesses pay the business profits tax, and 70% of our businesses in the state pay no business profits tax or business enterprise tax. And we've been rated overall to have the seventh lowest business taxes in the state. So, when there's a proposal to come in and to further cut those business taxes, there's a lot of concern that that really isn't the right way to move forward and invest in the state. So, there are many good things in the budget, but there are a number of issues that I've laid out to you that still remain to be of major concern to many of us. So, that's sort of the update. The vote will be tomorrow, and it's, and then the final vote, there's another bill, Senate Bill 191, which has to do with kindergarten. And the way that's moving forward is by saying that the monies to fund full-day kindergarten will now be linked to the monies that will be raised from allowing keno in the state. And that also is highly controversial because it's unpredictable and doesn't ensure going forward that communities will receive the full additional adequacy that's needed, being about, I think about $178,000 additional dollars for Newmarket if kindergarten goes forward. But if the monies are not there, you're guaranteed not $1,800, but only $1,100. And so, that's problematical as well. So, that's another vote that's coming up tomorrow that is highly contentious. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I hope this was helpful, and here I am.
Counselor, Town Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, you mentioned 2010, and that was the, the Great Recession and the horrible budget times that we all went through, the municipalities and the state. And you mentioned that there was a lot of downshifting. But in addition to downshifting, you cut off our source of funding. The state cut off our source.
Oh, right.
They suspended our revenue sharing.
The state did away with the 35% that was left to 25% for retirement, now it's nothing.
Well, not even that. I'm saying you shared revenues.
And, right, and, you know.
And that's a big one. And I guess my question there is, we're hearing that more monies going back into the rainy day fund, or for us, would be our fund balance or surplus. When is that going to get funded, or even a portion of it?
Well, I think that's what one of the arguments is right now. For instance, if we did not go forward with the business tax cuts, we would have an additional $20 million right now that could be dedicated to the kinds of needs that you're talking about. If we were to adopt just the governor's revenue predictions, we would have another $20 million that we could address local community needs. And that does not seem to be getting the attention and the support in the legislature that we would like to see it get, and we hear over and over again with the concerns with the ever-increasing local state property taxes as a result.
And I think it's one of those situations where, you know, before we add additional programs, there's, there's a commitment that the legislature, and I always remember, because it was an interesting quote from the Attorney General at the time, it was Warren Rudman, said he could never imagine a legislature, future legislature or future governor not living up to that commitment of paying the municipalities their fair share of the tax. Because the way this came about was, they repealed a bunch of other taxes that the municipalities were able to collect, and said, they said, we'll have one state one, and the state will always commit to giving some to the municipalities. In 2010, Governor Lynch suspended it, didn't repeal it, it's just suspended. So, we've not, we've been losing money since 2010. This isn't 2010. The economy's better, and we should be able to, yeah, so I think that's...
We feel that this would be a time to work, I know that, anyway.
I know it preaches the choir somewhat, so, yeah.
partisan, but I can tell you that Democrats would like to see communities move in the direction of being made whole again. And, but every time that's proposed, we're not successful in allocating those resources back to local communities, any more than the issue of the school building aid, you know, which is another way that local communities need to be helped, and yet, there's no money for that. And, I mean, Newmarket is only one, a number of communities that desperately need new schools or upgrade the schools that they have. They have changed the criteria for school building aid, which I think was a very good thing to do, so that it wasn't just communities that could pass a bond issue that got the monies to upgrade or build new schools, but there was other criteria that had to be met if you were to get support from the state. So, and I think that was absolutely critical, probably should have happened quite a while ago. But now, we have that new criteria, but we don't have the school building aid to help local communities. So, no, I just think that, you know, if...
Have another question?
If you could help us, you know, we need, and I'm sure you've all gotten the report that came from the New Hampshire Municipal Association, which really talks about the amount of money that has been lost over the last several years to local communities. It's enormous.
Did you have a question, Councilwoman Thompson? I have no other que, I have one last question. On the, I would just, you mentioned that there could be additional local transportation money, local road monies coming along, and I don't know how that process works, or whether you guys could be helpful, but it, one...
I will be happy to get you the specific information about how much will be coming to your town and how, how...
Now, does that include, we, we have kind of an interesting situation now that I'll point out, because, you know, there's been a great amount of improvement made to 108 north of Newmarket. But between Newmarket and Stratum, there's not been a lot of improvement, and, and there's the, the heaviest traffic increases seem to be in that southern stretch, and so, it's a, it's a very tight roadway. There's some history there in terms of widening, which, which really wasn't adequate anyways. And I think that, that roadway will, will need its some attention in the future with the growth that's gone on out here, and it's still a very narrow...
I'd be happy to work with you on that and see how we could move that forward in the best possible way.
Great. I see no other questions, but we thank you for your update.
Very welcome. Thank you for having me. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. So, I think we're back to, oh, whoops, sorry.
Minutes?
That's where I was headed.
Sorry, you got another member of the public.
Just a few things.
Sure. Thank you.
There is some money outside the budget, I believe it's S B 38, that will be sending some money to the towns for infrastructure, for roadwork, and I believe it's going to be apportioned by population and income and that sort of thing. So, that's a positive step. There's also some money, I think it's eight and a half million, but that's kind of contingent upon how the rainy day fund goes, that will go into a special fund, the governor and a handful of other people will decide what school, what priority gets that small amount of money. And they're talking about internet access and, you know, air quality and security, they're not talking about plumbing buildings, which you can't get very far with eight and a half million. Again, the, we're going to vote on the budget tomorrow, I'll be voting against it, mostly because of the tax cuts. We've had tax cuts, we've had a slowly improving economy, and the, or the House budget was something that offered, I believe it was $10 million each year of the bienniums of school building aid, that I think we're going to send 25 million or more back to the towns, which, you know, I supported that, but, you know, others, and the Republican Party killed that because it was too generous. So, we're hurting our communities and looking out for, I don't know who, the Koch Brothers or whatever, because the business tax cuts, tax cuts that most of, most of the businesses here don't pay, and yet, they think that's going to draw in more companies who don't have the workforce, don't have the appropriate workforce aged people, or the decent schools for them to go, and the property taxes, you know, that drive young people away. So, this is the wrong approach, and that's why the Senator and I... And that's why the Senator and I are doing the best we can, but, you know, it's an uphill battle when we don't have the majority. And even though we're afraid when we have the majority, if we were to get it back, we will have to clean up the mess left by this budget.
Thank you. Thank you. Should have said Representative Cahill, let's make it clear. Thank you for your comments. And if there's no other members of the public, I will be closing the public forum at this time. And we'll move on to consideration of the, start with the Town Council to consider acceptance of the May thirty-first non-public meeting, non-public minutes, excuse me. Are there any changes to those non-public meetings at this point? Seeing none, call the robe.
They had a motion, but not a second. Motion by Council Thompson.
Second.
Second by Council Cast. Council Burns?
Stand.
Council Finch?
Aye.
Council Thompson?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to one.
Okay. And to have a motion to approve the June seventh regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Call the robe.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Finch?
Aye.
Council Thompson?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Stand.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to one. Now back to...
For it, town administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get into my written report, I'd like to ask Town Council...
We skipped the...
Oh, we did?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, the non-public for six, seven.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any changes? Seeing none, call the robe.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Finch?
Aye.
Council Thompson?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Stand.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to one. Now back to...
For it, town administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get into my written report, council gave authority to negotiate with the owners of Two Center Street to purchase an easement on that. I just want to have clarification, I want to have a motion in, on the record, that you authorized the, approved the purchase of an easement on Two Center Street in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for stormwater management, and authorized this town administrator to execute the documents and to withdraw fifty thousand dollars from the Stormwater Management Capital Reserve Fund, as we previously discussed.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
So moved.
Second.
I think we discussed it before, but is there any other discussion at this time? If not, call the robe, please.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Finch?
Aye.
Council Thompson?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
On my written report, attached to my report is the monthly expense and revenue report. With approximately ninety-two percent of the year completed, our expenses continue to be below budget, with eighty-six percent of the budget expended, and there's really nothing out of the ordinary at this time. As for revenues, last month we were a little bit concerned with, a little bit behind for revenues. However, we did see a significant uptick over the last month. With ninety-two percent of the year completed, we actually have collected one hundred and four percent of our annual revenues. Last year, at this point in time, we collected twenty-four point one million dollars in revenues. And this year, we've collected twenty-five million. So our motor vehicle registrations bounced back, probably because the weather got warmer, so people started buying new cars. That was our big concern. Another item that we're looking at is the Town Hall security upgrade. The Facilities Director and I are working on getting proposals to upgrade to various security items here at Town Hall. This includes installation of moving security cameras and installation of some keyless door systems for the building. We've had a number of times buildings been unlocked after a meeting. In addition, it would allow us to secure access to certain areas of the building certain times of the day. There are other items that, when it comes to the proposal, we'll be discussing in non-public session, because this is one of the items that we can for security. The cost, as of this point, is, if the cost is reasonable, we will be asking to withdraw funds from the Building Improvement Capital Reserve Fund to address this. Just a reminder that the next Town Council meeting will be July nineteenth, and it will be the only meeting for July as we're going on our summer schedule. And I've asked the Finance Director to come in to update the Town Council on the MRI efficiency studies for the areas that her department is overseeing. But before that, is there any questions for the, for me?
I see no. Right now, I'll give my charge. Okay.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've been on the job for a little over a few months. Prior to my retirement was the MRI report. And the former Finance Director, I guess, participated in a couple initiatives that were put forth. The report overall was very complimentary of the team, and I agree, since I've been on board a short time, the team has helped me get up to speed quickly. So tonight, I'm going to just talk about the two initiatives for improvement. I'll discuss, the first one had to do with specifically paperless, paperless decentralized purchasing and invoice payments to continue to be a goal for the near future. Well, my understanding is this area for improvement can't stand alone on its own. It actually would need to have a software system behind it to do that. So this initiative, for me, has kind of morphed, morphed into a software implementation goal. So it started out talking about decentralized purchasing, but it really needs to be full software implementation. So I'm going to just tell you a little bit about where we are on that. This implementation will not only be something for the finance department, but all departments, so approximately twenty users across, across the town. It will be a fully integrated web-based software system for tax, recs, rec department, to the extent we can have permitting integrated, we'll look at that, but all the different groups that interface somehow with finance. So I've gotten up to speed on a bit of the history, and how we got to where we were. There was a, in fact, the longevity of the current financial system, Newsmart, was challenged back in two thousand thirteen. And we're looking to have a timeline for an objective to go live in July two thousand eighteen, at the end of next fiscal year, for software. So with that, I plan to do a request, well, I always say prior to that, there was a request for information in December two thousand fourteen, and funds were appropriated in this past budget for next year to cover the first payment of a multi, multi-year lease. A working group was then formed in May to look at implementation of the software with a number of stakeholders from the Tax Department, my Department of Finance, and IT. Next month, I plan to send out an RFP, which will have more specific requirements of what we're looking for, and bring to the council in September a proposal for a vendor. So from there, we would start work on installation over the winter through October through February, you know, the various software modules, hardware if needed. We will need to import, convert the financials from the former system into actually a new chart of accounts that needs to be developed. The current chart of accounts actually does, is not standard, and it doesn't tie into any state reporting, and it doesn't match. So this would be an opportunity to get all that aligned, so we could use the system, a new system to the best that we could to get the reports that we need from the state right out of the system as well, to add to efficiencies. As a team, we'll actually have to work together and identify if there's other resources that need to be pulled in and engage, engage others, because once we get this up and running, we will have to do training for implementation for other key financial activities. So really, the initiative started out with a decentralized purchasing system, but we really are looking to update the software.
Can I, just a couple of...
Yes, I was gonna ask.
Yeah. One thing, I wanted to make sure, to welcome you here and point out that for the people that are watching on TV, that you're Lisa Ambrosio.
Oh, sorry. I thought...
It's in our, it's in our agenda.
Yeah, I am sorry. Lisa Ambrosio, yes, I'm his friend.
Right. And you are the first of the shared personnel in Newmarket between...
Yes.
So this is sort of a...
And I'll speak a little bit to that with the next initiative that was on, from the MRI.
Right. But also on this one is, I realize they are separate finances, the school and town have separate finances. Will the software that you're looking to adopt for accounts payable, as you're describing, will you...
Ultimately, I would, but it, right now, the school system works, works fairly well, fine. There's no idea that it's going to go away anytime soon. But if, to the extent I can update that as well, but I have to look at the expense and the budget as well, but to have people who could perhaps work between the groups, yes, that is something that has been thought of.
Okay.
I have to just see what software is out there, but in the short term, we're not looking to change the school system, so...
As long as it's a long-term view, I think that sounds reasonable.
Could be.
Yeah.
It has to still, I, like I said, I've only been looking at the town side for a few months, often see, referring with the superintendent, Town Administrator, how we want to proceed with software.
Okay.
So the initiative right now in the short term is to look at updating the town side of things.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Council Cast has a question?
Oh, yes.
I'll say welcome as well. This is, this type of project is what I do for a living, by the way. So I congratulate you on seeing that, you know, kind of some of the additional benefits and going after those. Maybe besides what we were looking for, you were asking about is sharing, you know, systems, but another benefit might be having such efficiencies, you know, where people aren't dealing with paper, where they can do more value-added activities for the town, even if you're not realizing, you know, savings on a shared system with another group like the school. So are you, are you also thinking about that as well as what, what people can be doing instead of pushing paper? And do you, do you have that in mind?
Absolutely. That's one of the ma, big keys of this.
Yes. Okay.
POs, time sheets, everything like that. Would rather have some people that'll do it on their computer than, you can, there's usually a stack of paper this big when I come into my office that I have to sign for a lot of, number of forms, that we're trying to get rid of that I can approve different ways, even just my own time, because I'd spend the first twenty minutes signing paper. But that's, that's definitely a system that we're looking at. And we're looking at one...
Web-based?
Web-based. Goes across all departments, including code enforcement planning, which people wouldn't consider that usually in the finance, but it is part of, it's going to be basically a town-wide suite when it comes to the software.
The, the integration and also getting, instead of pushing things in, the emphasis on that, getting the information out, the analytics, the metrics that you need as a...
And that's what I want. It was, when we discussed, I said I want to have a dashboard where I could see, okay, there is this number of permits issued today, where this place on revenues is compared to last year. Somebody can just look real quick and provide that information. Right.
Different departments are putting in their cash receipts from tax. Where are we? I know, for example, Sean was stopped in at the Tax Department today to say, hey, how are we doing on the revenues for the sewer? He could actually probably just look at his dashboard and see it coming in, you know, time is helping it in.
Self-service, yes.
So that is the future, what we're hoping to be.
That's great.
Across from the accounts payable, the budgeting, cash management, the whole life cycle of the financials, really, payroll as well. Today, we have a lot of data entry from one person in our office, and we can decentralize a bit of that, and the approval will go a lot seamless too, from the different departments. But it will require some resources and training and some time, so we want to make the system try to user-friendly system as well, so everyone can really get in and use it to its max and be efficient about it. So, and it's something, would we, I'm just thinking, you know, long range, would it be an employee self-service, where they could go on and do some open enrollment things and updates, say they want to change their W two, W four, and they change their, would they be able to just go in and update that, feed it in? Perhaps. Might have those abilities. We're going to see what's out there, and as a team, decide what are our priorities and what we do, we needed to do to get good financial information, first of all, and foremost, and get payroll paid, and then see what other things we can expand on. So it could be, the short term, get it up to full live, but then there's even more things I think you can do, even when we get into the budget, budget cycle.
You have another question for Council Bowden?
Going in Excel and files, yes.
Another question?
Yes, a quick question regards to, I guess, payments that are made to the town. If they're done via credit card, is that something that the town's going to have to become PCI compliant?
Yes, PCI compliant, yes. The software that we would look to do that. I'm not sure today if, well, the tax, we would have to make sure that...
Big dollar fines.
...integrate there, yes. And I know rec also takes credit cards online, and I'm familiar with that PCI and make sure...
And are we currently PCI compliant?
We don't, one thing is that we, we actually, we always accept the payments through another third party.
Okay.
And they are. The reason why is also that municipalities, if we accept credit card payments, we must charge everybody additional, because we cannot, somebody cannot pay less by using a credit card. So we try to use third parties to do, for security and for all that as well, because it's just easier.
Did you have another, a next one on your...
Well, the second initiative identified had a couple parts, the first of which is in process. And at a high level, it has to do with my position, and it was written as consolidation of the town and school finance business operations. That was the first part of it. So my function is, is regarding the step to do that. And as I close the books and the year, form audits over the summer, complete the various state reporting, as fiscal year winds down on both sides, school and town, I will view it as success if I manage to get all that done and everything's in good shape as we end the year. So that's really the high level for that is, is my position. The second part of it that MRI brought up had to do with the absence of a successful consolidation, that we might look to outsource the payroll function. This is not something that I personally support, and in discussion with the former Finance Director, he had a chance to weigh in on that as well, and he agreed. To, to me, payroll is one of the most critical functions in the finance department, and it's preferable to have the backup in-house. So I believe they were thinking perhaps the third party might be the school side of things. In the short run, I'm going to look to make sure that there's sufficient cross-training within the town side and within the school side. And if long range is to have some of those positions cross between the town and school, I don't know that standing here right now. The resources, when you outsource, there's more time to manage that there can be, you don't know your business as well, there's errors that are generated, there's delays in the quarterly. You don't control as much of that, and you still have to track and manage third party. And even down the road, more so morale with a payroll that people can't just come in and talk to you about, you have to call the eight-hundred number, that just, I don't know. I'm not supportive of that, and I...
Sure.
Yeah, and I backed it up as well. I've been in communities where we did outsource the payroll, and basically, you're paying somebody to do the same thing twice, because you have, somebody still has to enter all those figures and monitor it and send it to a payroll processing company, and then they just send the checks back. Well, that person could just finish the job in-house and issue the payroll as well. It's been working here. I don't see any reason why I change this at this point.
Keep the control, really.
Right. And if there's an issue, we can address it quickly.
Could you, could you comment anymore? I mean, I, I think when, when we, several of us that were on the subcommittee visited Cape Elizabeth, it was, it was impressive how they had integrated some of the, you know, they had one person doing payroll for both town and school, and, you know, one person that was doing...
Right. And that would take some cross-training as well, because the staff that's there have been on the school side, town side, and not to say that it couldn't be a long-range thing, but in the short term, and from my understanding, my position is the one that's crossing. been on the school side, town side, and not to say that it couldn't be a long-range thing, but in the short term, and from my understanding, my position is the one that's crossing, and if I can get that down and have a model for it, make it easier, it's just, um, even now in the first few months, getting up to speed on the town has taken a lot of my, many, if you have another five minutes, someone's coming around to ask a question there, and just trying to get, get the flow of having both, and, um, like any job, starting out, I, I, I would want to give myself at least six months before I start pulling the team, um-
Absolutely. I mean, they didn't, they didn't do it overnight either. They, they, it took them years to get there, but I, I, it sounded like it worked well after, after a period of time, you know, it evolved, so.
Right, and I, I do see synergies, I do see things that could work across when you're tracking grants on one side, with, with, you know, just a different name on the other. There's things that from what capital reserve funds, we have the town ones, we have school, so we have one person. There, there are things I'm already thinking about, but to have the team that way till I'm fully just-
I hear you.
-flow would not be good for everyone in the short run, just honestly, so.
Sounds good. I see no other questions, but I, I appreciate the update, that's very helpful.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that conclusion of the town and ministry report?
Yep.
Okay, and, uh, any committee reports, updates?
Yes. Uh, I'm going to read from my notes.
Okay, Council Finch, is this, did I mention-
Oh, no, this is for, uh, committee report, yeah.
Oh, mine, mine is two.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So, um, I was the alternate on the planning board meeting last Tuesday, the thirteenth. Um, the major activity was the presentation of findings from the groundwater modeling study, uh, which is sponsored by the Stratford Regional Planning Commission with staff from UNH. This was the final presentation of impacts to drinking water by sea level rise, uh, which would include flooding and heavy precipit- precipitation. Um, the study modeled threats such as septic systems and underground storage tanks, um, using four scenarios from NOAA studies. Uh, the limitations of the study included some source data was not available, like they didn't know the actual inventory of all septic systems in the town, so those were called out, uh, you know, in the report. The main conclusions is that there were three, um, infrastructure locations, thirty private water supplies at risk, plus one public supply, water supply at Moody Point, uh, which is apparently already getting some saltwater intrusion. It was actually a gentleman from Moody Point, I don't know his name, but he was doing the daily monitoring of the water out at Moody Point, so that was also added to the report or to the presentation of the report. Um, I think, um, what I'd call out is that there were strategies, um, and action plans recommended in the study that weren't reviewed specifically in the presentation that I recall, um, but those would include potential partnerships with NHDAES and adjacent communities. Um, there were some very specific actions that could be taken by the town and various committees. Um, I, I had an extra copy, but I gave it to, to Counselor Burns, but I think it's a good read, maybe for the whole council to just see, see what's in there. It's some pretty interesting data. All right, I know that was really lengthy. Um, I have three other, I, two other items. There was a request for extension on, uh, Chaney Project, that was tabled, um, to check on, uh, I think there was a question about the timeframe involved in that, uh, and it also if it could be, um, linked to some conditions, and so that was tabled, noting that the town planner had, um, recommended the extension be approved, just, that got out there. The, um, let's see, the other, last item was the CCRC zoning overlay for off New Road. Um, the town's attorney's memo was made public regarding the tax map discrepancy, um, for the nine, I think it was nine acres. Um, the committee, um, wanted to revisit definitions of the types of facilities before the next public hearing and kind of get up to speed on exactly what those are. Uh, Planner Hardy provided some relevant info in that regard. Um, I also note that, um, Gary Levy was at the meeting, and he suggested the projected density of that area also be revisited in light of things like coastal protection zones, so just take that into consideration as well. Um, let's see, uh, Planner Hardy announced the rewrite of sewer water regulations that I think we already knew was announced in one of our meetings, um, that the grant was awarded to start, and that that would start in July. Um, uh, there were two volunteers from the committee, including myself and Jeff, to help with that, so. Um, and she also mentioned that she didn't, wasn't quite sure if that would, that work would credit towards storm, stormwater management, so. That was a lot. It was a long meeting, so a lot of gym packed, so.
Okay. Um, the Conservation Commission, um, met on June eighth. Uh, the big focus early on was a presentation from, uh, by Amanda Stone from UNH about climate change, um, uh, from the New Hampshire Setting Sail Project. Um, we discussed, uh, different resources that were available for things like, um, having a high watermark to kind of show the community what impact, uh, we can, uh, experience from that. Uh, we talked about invasive species that could move in. Um, it was mainly just informational for ways that we could kind of reach out to the community, uh, and in particular, the program from, the Setting Sail Program does some, uh, community outreach to, to school children, so might kind of inform about the potential impacts on, on the community. Um, after that, we discussed, um, kind of buffer zones on the Boulder Brook subdivision, doing site walks, uh, about a couple of trees that had been kind of on the, on the boundary line there, so that had been discussed, and we've got a few, uh, Conservation Commission members that now are, are trained to do site walks. Um, the big concern, and we actually did a site walk yesterday, was, was Shanda Park, um, with kind of some erosion around the edges. Um, we looked at it about a month ago, and then we looked at it yesterday, and some rocks had actually tumbled off the edge, um, so the concern there is how we could kind of reinforce it moving forward, protect it, um, and short-term just provide some kind of caution areas, so people aren't going out on the loose edges, but there's certainly some, quite a bit of erosion around the whole park, so how we can best protect the park.
Okay, and, uh, seeing no others, I'll add, uh, my committee was the dam committee, uh, shortly after our last meeting, the dam committee met with, uh, had three engineering firms present, uh, uh, we were looking for, for stability analysis, for potential abutment, either new wall, abutment walls or, uh, extension to the existing abutment walls, and, um, and also just the design, conceptual design work around what that all is going to look like and what, you know, so there was a, a variety of event, uh, engineering work that needed to be done, and we were selecting an engineering firm to do that, and, um, I think you see that it's, it's, the resolution for that is in the first reading, but we selected GZA, and it was, um, I think in this case, the, you know, all three firms were good firms, two of them which the town has done a lot of work with before, but there was, uh, in this case, strong consensus that the strongest for this particular work to be done was GZA, and it was also the low bid, so it was not a contentious process at all, which was, it's always a good thing, and so, that's the, I think that, so we'll be seeing work being done now. I, I think that there's no plan at this point that I know of to do at drawdown, I don't think that that was announced or anything of that nature, but there will be engineering work going on, and, and, uh, we're still hoping that, that the work can proceed fast enough so that we would be, uh, be looking at a warrant article, uh, in the, when we come around town any time. So, uh, that's it for the dam committee. So, next up, um, resolutions in the second re- relating to a paving improvements bid, and I got to get caught up and unlock my iPad here to get going. So, anybody had, at that page that knows what page we're going to?
One fifty-eight.
Need a motion to approve resolution twenty sixteen seventeen dash thirty-three relating to pavement improvement bid.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion by Counselor Burns, second by Counselor Cast, is it?
No, Thompson.
Thompson, thank you.
And, um, is somebody going to come forward and?
Everybody saw the staff before, I think it explains it all. We never received only the one bid. I went out, sent it out to some of the bigger companies. As you know, Bell and Flynn's been having, getting this for so long, I think people are just tired of doing all the work to put a bid in, but I, I really don't have answers for that, but we did post it, we put it out there, it was on all the pages, put it out early.
The price per ton came in lower than anticipated, so we're able to actually do more this year than anticipated. Um, initially for New Road, we were going to end halfway, uh, through New Road, and it's actually going to go up to, from the bridge to Birch Drive.
We won't go past where the water main needs to be replaced, because that'll get obviously dug up.
Queued up anyway, right?
Counsel Thompson?
Um, I had a question. We have, and I don't have my roads scheduled here, that UNH developed for us, and what was going to be done this year and what was going to be done the next X number of years, but I know because the bids came in, um, less that you are proposing doing an additional twenty-nine hundred lineal feet of New Road. I'm not saying it doesn't need it, but the other one that I keep hearing residents talk about a lot is Granite Street. And I guess my question is, I'm not saying that more of New Road can't, shouldn't be done, I get it, uh, whatever the, the worst sections are, but is there, is there any way to bump up Granite Street or to do it this year?
I, I would just say that a lot of people, there are, there are a lot of what I would say are higher priority roads in town, and I have been preaching this plan to the residents and saying, this is what we're following.
Okay.
I have explained how the budget has been increased, and that how prices came in lower and we're able to do more. New Road was going to take us a couple of years to do, and at this point, we'll stop, we were going to stop this year if you will break this plan, tonight, because of the water main, and then continue on, so the rest of New Road, New Year, New Road was in the plan as a, as a two-year plan, essentially. I have, I have that plan in front of me.
I just-
It was two years.
Thank God you do.
So-
Okay.
We're, we're going to do it all in one, essentially, except for that last couple thousand feet. It is going to bump some of the stuff up in the plan sooner.
That's, that's, I guess my question is, we're doing more now, so things will come up in their order of prioritization, but we got to stick with-
Which Granite Street is next year.
Okay.
So, yeah, and, and part of the thing also is that when we, the plan is created, some of the cost savings are, you do a group of streets at the same time. So next year in the plan, it's Elm Street, Pine Street, Elm Court, Sandbourne, Granite Central, so they're in the area, get it done, and get-
And I thought that was worth just explaining, I'm not-
Yep.
-disagreeing, but I, it's important, I think, for people to know, for understand, I want to understand how things bump up in priority, um, and we do have this plan, and sticking to it, I think, is, is important, barring, oh my goodness, something really opened up on Road X, um, yeah, we got to stick with the plan.
There are a couple of spots, we won't have to do it this way, but there are a couple of spots and a couple of roads, we are going to have to address some small areas-
Right.
-that are very minor, but they, before winter, because they're just that bad, so.
Good, fine, thank you.
Uh-
You can shut my light out there.
Yeah, your light, oh, thank you. Counsel Boden?
Uh, question, do we know what, if we're not getting bids from other contractors, do we have any idea what other towns that are not using Bell and Flynn are paying?
I, I-
Is it, is it-
Check well, are it communities?
It's, it's, it is. I, I read the articles about what other towns are doing for projects. One of the problems that we have is that in the grand scheme of things, two hundred, two to three hundred thousand dollars is not a lot for a paving company to put in, especially like a Pike or somebody big like that. They're looking for the, um, five hundred to a million for a community where they can get, they come in for the summer and they've got a project the whole time.
We're still way behind on budgets compared to other communities.
Okay.
Just, we're a pretty small speck, so a lot of this made up really, you know, a lot of communities do use Bell and Flynn, New Orleans works, Texas works, Texas works, a lot of, just-
Sort of a regionalization thing.
Is there, I guess, a potential to do it? Is that a long-term contract with them, or, you know, multi-year, or?
Well, it's good to go out and get your prices, I think, if you're, it's-
The, the big roll of the die is, um, oil.
Correct.
If the oil prices are there now, that's why it's cheaper, we're able to do more, but if you remember a couple, a few years ago, we had to cut back.
Yep.
The economy's doing better, there's a lot of projects going on too, so these guys get busy and they can make better money in the product, and working from, you know, there's a lot of other factors that kind of figure into this.
Well, to the extent, well, last year, we did, we did make it an effort to find more money to, recognizing that oil was cheap and it continues to be cheap, and then oil prices are falling again.
And I can tell you, these bigger companies, they, they were inquiring and asking questions and giving the answers, and they just didn't turn them in. I, I don't know why.
Yeah.
They, they led me to believe they were going to turn one in, and they didn't turn one in.
Uh, I have no more lights, can we call the, uh, call the road?
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay, and this is, uh, Resolution twenty sixteen seventeen dash thirty-four relating to paving improvements to Bay Road Lamprey Street parking lot. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have any comments to make about this?
Just briefly, uh, the parking lot, I, I probably should have supplied some photos, it's, it's, we can almost not plow it with a vehicle anymore.
Right.
And it is utilized, everybody uses it, they're looking at making it all permanent parking down there to make some revenue, but it does need to be fixed in order to do so. It's a town parking lot, and it's been one for quite some time, and, uh, it is highly utilized, unfortunately, a lot of people use it for storage, I can attest, because I typically plow that parking lot, um, so.
So, so basically, what will hap- will there continue to be some that are not, uh, long-term lease?
As soon as we fix it, that's when we'll come up with a policy for the, the parking lot, but before we do that, we want to get it fixed, so we can-
Actually see what you-
See what we have.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I, I, for festivals and stuff like that, I know sometimes that that's, rather than hunt around for-
Yeah.
-a parking spot, I go there, um, and I-
And we would like to encourage business owners to park there instead in front of their businesses as well.
Right, right, so I, I think that's all to the good.
[laughing]
Right, no, it's a good, it, it's a good spot to know, and it, it's a utilizable space, it's close to a lot of things, so it's, it's an asset, it's good to see it being put to better use.
Yep.
Counsel Boden?
Just a dumb question, I can ask those, right? I guess, using Bell and Flynn for this as well, is there any benefit, cost benefit to combine the two parts of the paving of the road system and this here?
This is, this actually is combining it. We're using the same, getting the same tonnage for price, and this, they're going to do it while they're out here.
Okay.
There's some different costs, because it's, it's a different type of structure, but it's the same overall price.
Okay.
Cool, thank you.
Again, knowing so, no further lights, can we call the road?
Counsel Burns.
Aye.
Counsel Finch.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel Cast.
Aye.
Counsel Boden.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
And, uh, next up.
Ricky, you're on it.
Resolution twenty sixteen twenty seventeen dash thirty-five relating to the replacement of air conditioning unit at the police station.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
The building was built in ninety-five, as you know, it's, uh, an existing unit, they've been making some repairs to it, they're putting a bunch of money into it, they currently have no way to see up there, it's on the second floor, so it's pretty, pretty hot, there's some offices, trade rooms, and the, the unit needs to be- trade rooms. And the, the unit needs to be replaced. Thermo's under contract with the town until June of 2018 for all repairs. These types of units, they received the contract last fall. They provided the, it, it needs to be replaced. Is AC there now? It needs to get fixed.
This, the situation here is that while it's under my, it's under the level I can expend, we're withdrawing the funds from the capital reserve fund, so we have to come to the town council.
Okay. Council Thompson?
I get that it's hot, I get the unit needs to be replaced. Why was this not bid out in that, I understand that thermo, they, it says they're under contract for repair and maintenance, not new. So I'd like a clarification into why it didn't go, build or?
They're under contract for PMs, and they're also under contract to make repairs and replace or fix or do whatever.
Okay.
Furnaces, the AC units, but the dollar amount, we had to come ask for the funds.
I guess we.
They are under contract to do this.
By replacing that, if you went to a different, there's, there's two systems there right now.
I don't see their contract in front of me, so.
Yeah, there's two systems at the.
Repair and replace.
There's two systems at the police station right now, correct?
Repair and maintenance.
One is gone, they, they maintain the other one, so you need to replace in kind. So that's why, if you had two different systems, it'd be the issue. That's what I was, correct, Rick?
There's two, two, there's a system for the downstairs, there's a system.
A system for the upstairs. Yeah, that's not a thing, it just said that the process, it just said that thermodynamics is currently under contract to maintain and repair, not
Replace.
So it's a.
If we were replacing the entire system, then that would definitely go out to bid that situation.
So, and I just have a question, just in terms of not, not about this, I'm fine with this, but in the future, will this be something that comes under the facilities?
Yes, he wasn't on board, so.
Right, right, I understand.
Yeah.
But that, that's how it would work in the future. Call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
I just can't believe this is half the cost of a, of a slide at the rec.
Half the price of the slide at the rec.
Have a long memory.
Sorry. I'd make it funny.
Okay.
Sorry you didn't put the contract in there, but I did double check it, it's.
Okay, and that's why, just why I asked the question, yep.
She has a copy, but she can keep it.
Okay.
It's okay.
I'll try it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I asked for it earlier, but at long last, we're back to ordinance 04-2016-2017, an ordinance adopting Chapter 14, Article 3 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire Sewer Use Ordinance.
We'll make a motion to adopt said ordinance.
Second that.
Second, Council Bowden. Are there any, I know there were at least one question at that time, I don't have any questions right now. Going, going, gone. I think we can call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
It was a long wait for that, I'm sorry. Okay, and we move on to ordinance 05-2016-2017, an ordinance amending Chapter 32 zoning, Article 1, Section 32-2, purposes in Article 4, signs of the municipal code of the town of Newmarket and zoning ordinance, adopted 2/14/1996, as amended through March 1, 2017. And motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
On it.
Okay, do we have any questions about the sign ordinances? Council Cast?
Just for my information, because I don't, I'm new here, still, when you change these, does that also affect any existing signs?
No, they'll, they'll all be vested uses, so anybody who's got a signature sign can keep it as long as they keep it maintained in that condition.
Okay, great.
That's the last paragraph.
Oh, missed it.
Council Thompson?
Just a quick question, because I've just experienced it where said Taps Plumbing is in beautiful North Hampton, New Hampshire. I have a neon sign inside my building, but in an upper window, and I have, I have neon in there. Apparently, that is grandfathered at this point, and the town has changed its signage regulations as well, which means that our understanding is they're regulating what signs I can put inside my property, because it's Route 1, and I, I get that neon and flashing things, they're worried about drivers and distractions and things like that, but this is relatively new and somewhat disconcerting to know that it's regulated, and it's not flashing, but it's regulated what I can and cannot do inside my space. Can you address that just a little bit more as far as New Market goes?
Always has limited neon style signs inside the window, it's less than four square feet, and they can't blink. So we did do that as well, and typically, sign ordinances do stop at the glass, and that's why the grocery stores always have all that glass, and, but then they just immediately fill them with paper signs.
Yeah.
Almost always the sign ordinances, but not, not 100%, because even liquor signs can't be visible inside the business, that's a, that's a state law, you know, but.
Right.
Sometimes the sign ordinances do come inside, and neon blinking lights is about the time usually.
And that's where it feels like it's overreaching, I mean, I think mine is, mine is, is big, it's probably six by eight, it's script, I mean, it's not a full.
Right.
Sign, like you said, the, the Sitco sign or the Coca-Cola or something like that, it's not that, it's, it's a bunch of script, but it's big, but it is inside the glass, and apparently, we're not allowed to do that anymore, blinking or not.
Right, well, ours, ours continues to allow the four square feet, sometimes have two square feet, which kind of allows that little open sign.
Okay, and then that's okay, so, okay.
And we do have a few people that took advantage of those four square feet, it is a little bit on the bigger side, but it's, it's inside glass, it's good enough that tough looking to the community, I don't think.
Yeah, and like you said, if it's not flashing, or if it's not obnoxious, or.
That's actually your guys' idea.
A flashing Jessica Rabbit or something, we should be, we should be, but you can't regulate contact, content, anyway.
Some dazzles eyes that drive, there's a whole separate RSA for that, if you're looking like that really bothers a driver, that's another.
And that we don't need down here, I mean, it is confusing enough when it's, when it's busy and we have other flashing signs, we wanna pay attention to like crosswalk signs. So I get it, it's, okay, thank you.
We want drivers to pay attention to the signs they really need to see, like pedestrians and stuff like that.
Right, right. Okay, thanks, Mike. Thank you.
Go ahead, I see you coming.
What is a feather flag, I'm sorry?
Oh, those, those, yeah, thank you.
You know what they, yeah, you'll know when we tell you.
Yeah, they're on a long fireglass width, usually 12 to 15 feet high, and only are about a foot wide. It's very long, and.
Oh, I like that.
Some of the filters are using them on waterfront property, I've seen. They did have some downtown, which we kinda called banners.
Subway restaurants.
Exactly, that's very famous, yeah.
And we actually had a resident who was very upset about that, had apparently been on planning board way back when, and said, we just don't want this whole town looking like it was.
Oh, bummer.
So.
All right. Oh, well, next time.
Should've gone to the hearing.
Having, having been on the subcommittee and, and, I mean, a lot of work went into any of these regulations, there's a lot of work and considerations, and, you know, there were two or three subcommittee meetings and planning board meetings, so a lot of effort gets to the point where it's brought here, so, and the, and the council, of course, has an important oversight role to look at it again. But if this meet, if, if this part of the meeting seems short, it's not because a lot of care hasn't gone into drafting these, these ordinances. So, with that, I think we can call the roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Finch.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay. And we are now, let's see, first readings, first readings, thank you. And, first reading on the dam, how exciting.
Can we read?
Aye.
Got it right here.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Resolution 2016-17-36 authorizing the town administrator enter into an agreement with GZA Geo Environmental Inc. to conduct a stability analysis and design conceptual plans for the abutment walls for the McAllen Dam. Whereas the state New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services has issued a letter of deficiency for the town-owned McAllen Dam located in the downtown Newmarket, and the town of Newmarket is required to address the issues identified in the letter of deficiency. And whereas the town council in August 2014 formed the McAllen Dam Study Committee to examine options for addressing the town's letter of deficiency and report back to the town council with a recommended course of action related to removal, preservation, or other possibilities for the McAllen Dam. And whereas the town has issued a request for qualifications and proposals for professional engineering services for stability analysis and conceptual design with a focus of raising the abutment walls on either side of the dam as a solution to addressing the letter of deficiency. And whereas the McAllen Dam Advisory Committee and three firms provide stability analysis and conceptual design of abutment walls services for the McAllen Dam. And whereas GZA submitted a proposal and was selected as a top-ranking consultant in accordance with the town's procurement requirements. When, whereas the GEA proposal involves the following components, of course, I hit the wrong number. Bid, base bid, $35,000, including emergency action plan and operation maintenance response form update, optional services, automation analysis of $4,000, subsurface exploration of $5,000, underwater investigation of $1,500, hydraulic analysis of $1,500, for a total of $12,000 additional. And whereas the committee recommends hiring GZA Geo Environmental Inc. of Bedford, New Hampshire to conduct this service, now therefore, let it be resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorizes the town administrator enter into an agreement with GZA Geo Environmental Inc. to conduct a stability analysis and conceptual design for the abutment walls for the McAllen Dam in an amount not to exceed $47,000 and to withdraw said amount from the previously established McAllen Dam Capital Reserve Fund. First reading, June 21, 2017.
Very nice.
Thanks, sir.
And just so I won't get rusty, I'll do the. Resolution 2016-17-37 authorizing the town administrator to enter into a three-year agreement with First Light for hosted PBX telephone system services, whereas it has been determined that the current telephone system has come to the end of its useful life, and whereas the Director of Information Technology requested proposals to replace the current system, and whereas the town currently pays $3,015 monthly for communication services, and whereas the Director of IT and Director of Facilities recommend that the town enter into an agreement with First Light, formerly Bay Ring, for hosted PBX services, now therefore, be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council, that the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into a three-year agreement with First Light for hosted PBX services for the cost of $36,363 annually, based on a monthly cost of $3,030.25, inclusive of all fees and services. First reading, June 21, 2017.
Nicely done as well.
That's what we have so far. And for both of those, and in particular, the phone one, anybody having questions, would, like we've done in the past, submit them to you by, any questions.
Yep.
Come in by email if you have them, or if you have it right now, we could, but usually that's what we ask for, is to submit them, it's not for discussion now. So, any, any comments from, any correspondence to the town council, we'll start with that.
No, there is none.
And closing comments by town councillors? And, go ahead.
Yes, wanted to, I guess, thank all the parents and players of the community who worked very hard to make it successful, excuse me, softball season for the girls of New Market. Next year will be, still in need of volunteers, more volunteers, so that's not a demand, it's, it's a question, it's a favor, and asking you guys to step up, so hopefully we'll get that done. It's our first 10, 10-year-old in the under tournament, so we'll play in that this weekend in Kensington, so we're pretty excited to be part of that. And I'd like to congratulate the boys 12 and under, who won today's district championship, came back from 6-0 to win 8-7 against Seacoast United Team.
Nice.
They'll be off to the state, the state tournament.
Nice.
Congrats.
Good job.
Well, along a similar lines, I'll just congratulate Amy and her having taken over leadership of the rec department, having their first, under her leadership, having the first fishing derby.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's a great event, and I've, having grandchildren in town, I've participated in that in the last couple, three years, and I can just tell you, it was a really exciting day for my grandson, his first trophy, he was pretty, pretty much on cloud nine, so it's, it's a great event, and thanks to the people that make it happen. A lot of volunteers there, a lot of work goes into it, and the landowners, which are also an important part of that event. So, I see no other comments, I think we, we are adjourned.
So moved.
It's been drilled into my head, we do no motions.
Did you mention, yeah, well, the other thing, did you mention where Council Weinstein was this evening?